Okay, I thank your attention. Let's rise for the pledge. My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its superior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I gotta say that was the best pledge has sounded in a long time. It is good to have all of you here today from the community. Welcome, school board members minus three, but we do have enough people to be business. Secretary Stepek, attendance?
Certainly. President Donnelly?
Here.
Vice President Brazington?
Nah.
Secretary Stepek, here. Treasurer Guthrie?
Nah.
Trustee Bailey?
Nah.
Trustee DelSandro?
Here.
Trustee Schaefer?
Here.
Very good. Board members, changes to the board agenda? I'm gonna be adding a first reading of Bylaw 0131.1, and I'm gonna move that to number 10 on our agenda where we're dealing with other policies, so we'll talk about them. So I just want you to know that we're going to add that as an agenda item. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Alright, so we have a motion under the consent agenda for the minutes of May 22nd, as well as bills payable for April 2018. Mr. Stepek?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support, Dan? There's support? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You are all here, most of you are here, for the pre-arranged request to address the board, and so let's start with Clear Lake? Clear Lake Academic Games. Medals. Medals, medals.
Lots of points.
Lots of points. You could hear them clinging down the hallways tonight, so that's how I knew that they were here. So, it's a pleasure this evening to recognize three different individuals. Michael Duong, who's actually now a middle schooler. Jenna Duong, who's a fifth, gonna be a middle schooler. And then Owen Pavlock, who will also be moving to the middle school. They each have been competing in academic games over the course of the past several years. I know Michael has been, obviously, the longest. They have been a combined team with Oxford Elementary School. One of the coaches is also here. I'd like to introduce Debbie Duong, who's spent an incredible amount of time working with the kids. But this group actually qualified for Nationals in Knoxville, Tennessee, this past April. They did extremely well, so that's the best of the best throughout the country. So, I think it's something to be extremely proud of. I am gonna just turn things over to Mrs. Duong for a moment, and she's gonna give you a brief overview of how they did.
Okay, so thank you for inviting us. To get to Nationals, they had to qualify at states, and Jenna and Owen's team also had Luke Diego, Derek Kopeck, and Max Lovins. And they medaled in seven of the nine, seven of the eight games that they played. They got honorable mention in Propaganda, second place in Linguistics, third place in Onsets, second place in Wolf, honorable mention in Current Events, and honorable mention in Presidents. Jenna and Owen were the only two that played, also played Theme, so they played all of the games, and they got honorable mention in Theme. Michael got second place in Wolf and honorable mention in Presidents. And then at Nationals, which is the best of the best, it's really very amazing to go see that, because when you see all the kids from all the different states, it's kind of, it's the cream of the crop there, so it's really, really tough there, and they did really well. Jenna and Owen's team got second place in Equations, third place in Wolf, third place in Onsets, and third place in Writing. And then Michael, he did really well. He was on a combo team, he played as an individual, because, I mean, they had enough middle school players, so, you know, he held his own.
Great job, thank you very much. DA? Alright, this evening, we would like to recognize Nolan Schaefer for his hard work in reading this year. We wanted to bring him in front of the board and recognize him for a couple reasons. One, because he's been working so hard and doing so well, but two, because we've been spending the last couple of years talking a lot about the reading assessments and intervention that we've been working on within all of our elementary schools. And Nolan is such a great example of the quality of work that our interventionists are doing with our students. And it also, not just the work that we're doing, but it also takes a lot of hard work from the students as well. So, I just wanted to recognize Nolan this evening for his hard work. Nolan, great job. Great job. Lakeville?
Hello, Nolan. Yeah, these are my trophies, I have a CPI certification. Hi, everyone. You do? Fantastic. Very nice, there's a couple of us, and actually, it's a little bit easier, so. At Lakeville Elementary this year, we had our first full year of doing a really cool community outreach program, which started with Ryan Wasman, who wanted to find a way to get mentors to work with our students, to make that connection, to give them another cheerleader, to give each of our students another person cheering them on, rooting them on, and being behind them. So, we did a community outreach program with Firmly Rooted, and I'm going to introduce Kimberly Donnelly to share with you the information about that program. And Matthew Price, I can't forget about Matthew, that's an important person. And is Emma here?
Emma's here. Actually, she might be in the hallway, I'll check. You and you, dude. Okay.
Well, thank you so much for having us. So Firmly Rooted does try to do a lot of work in the community, and when Tom, I'm Tom's wife. Hi, honey. And when Tom had taught, we had talked about the fact that literacy rates at Lakeville were a little bit lower in some areas than desired. We got to thinking about what we could do, and we decided to try and start a literacy program. We started in March of 2017 with a group of about, oh, five or six mentors, about seven or eight kids, and we just went in, we had the kids read to us, we read to them, and played games, and gave them food. The food is good, right, Matthew? Yeah. And then we started again last fall, and we went until Christmas doing the same sort of model. But then in January, when we had gotten a few more students and a few more mentors, we actually adopted the Center for Success model. Center for Success is a nonprofit organization based in Detroit, and they have centers in Detroit, Pontiac, and Saginaw, and they are an after-school literacy program for at-risk kids. So we did some training for our mentors then, and we got a little bit more formalized in our program. What we did is the kids would come in, we'd have a circle time with them, what was the most popular thing for us to do at circle time, Matthew?
Um, tell our highs and lows.
Highs and lows. So what happened great during the day, what maybe wasn't so great during the day. That was very popular. Then we went to reading, and they would read with their mentor one-on-one, and the whole point of that was not to make them read, but to show them reading is fun. So sometimes it was reading every other word. Sometimes the mentor did all the reading. And then we went to literacy games focused on the areas where they needed some help. We played some games like that. Then we went to classic board games, things that they could play in about 15 or 20 minutes with their mentors, and then we sent them on their way with a healthy snack. Matthew, I want to ask you, Matthew is one of our great students that never missed. Matthew, what did you like most about the literacy program?
I liked reading and board games.
Okay. Which board game is your favorite?
Checkers.
Yes, lots of checkers was played in the media center. So we, our goals were to have fun, fun in reading, and to build relationships. And we had a great self-discipline program where, Matthew, what would you work to do with your clips? What levels would you try to get to with your behavior?
Leader.
Role model?
Role model and leader.
Role model and leader. So we were trying to help them learn those skills too, to become role models and leaders in the school. So it was pretty successful. I know we're just a small piece of the puzzle, but we had a great time. We actually grew from just Firmly Rooted people doing it to an engineer from FCA put it out there as a project, we got some other guys to come in. They actually did Pinewood Derby Paris. Did you like the Pinewood Derby the last day?
Yeah.
And the FCA engineers are interested in doing it again next year. We also had some people that heard about us in the community that just came and wanted to get involved in the same way. And I just wanted to share with you just a couple of the outcomes, because I think that's important to know if the program has meaning. There's a little girl who jumped two reading levels, and the only reading logs she turned in this year were from the book club, the literacy program. So the support from the literacy program is the only outside support that they see that she's receiving. Another little guy jumped a couple levels, he enjoyed having a positive adult role model and connection. He was dismissed from behavior intervention with one of our interventionists this year after literacy program was underway. And then another little girl, she said, her words, "It was fun, my favorite thing about it was the reading. I think it helped me with reading. I am now reading to my baby dolls at home. I read to them every night, and I do this now because of book club." So it was a lot of fun, we really enjoyed having the opportunity to partner with Oxford Schools this way, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to thank Kimberly and all of the mentors that worked with our students this year. It was really fun to go in there and see them. Every student had a different thing that they loved, so it was a wonderful little program that they had built into quite a big program, and we look forward to seeing where it grows.
Alright, Leonard, fifth grade, safety patrol. They're directing traffic. We need it. We need it. Alright, how about OES Academic Games?
OES is the traffic.
Or Leonard is. Directing OES. What's that? Alright. Oxford High School Band and Orchestra.
Mr. Givens is always here.
Always.
He doesn't leave the building. That's why Mrs. Givens is smiling. This whole board thing doesn't work.
It's been an absolute honor to work with our students in our band program, which includes our Wind Ensemble, it includes our symphony band, our orchestra band, our marching band, and then not here this evening is our jazz band led by Mr. John Hill, who was our teacher of the year. And our students have had arguably the most successful year we've had with band, both collectively and with the individual successes we've had, probably in the history of the high school. So, I really enjoyed working with Mr. Jim Givens, our band director, and so I'm gonna pass it over to him and let him give some highlights.
So, we did have a very successful year. There's several band students in the audience for other activities, so at the end I'll have them stand up and they can be acknowledged. We started out our year with the marching band doing competitions. We competed in three competitions. The band took first place at the Alamo Marching Competition, second place at the Brandon Competition, where we received first place in marching, second place in the music performance for second overall, and then we took first place at the Pontiac Marching Competition. Moving into our concert season, all three of our concert bands, the Concert Band, the Symphonic Band, and the Wind Ensemble got straight ones at District Band Festival, with the Symphonic Band and the Wind Ensemble both getting all As. So on the judging sheets, they give five scores per judge, and there's four judges, so all four of the judges gave us straight As, which was a huge accomplishment for the kids. We decided with the Wind Ensemble, because I felt like they needed more challenge, and so we decided to send the Wind Ensemble to State Band Festival. We've qualified every year for the last several years. We haven't gone, this year we went, and the Wind Ensemble got straight ones at State Band Festival, which is a huge accomplishment for them. Our jazz band, just some of the highlights of their year, they opened for the Lansing Symphony Big Band, they performed at Cliff Bells in downtown Detroit, and they performed at the Hastings Jazz Festival on the west side of the state. So they're taking the Oxford High School and Oxford Band Program all over the state, literally. They received straight ones at State Jazz Festival in March, which was a huge accomplishment. Some individual honors that our band students got, in the fall, we had several students audition for Allstate. What students do is they go, they, every student in the state that auditions for Allstate plays the same material, it's college-level material, they do scales and they sight-read. We had more students make Allstate than ever before. Tyler Dolinsky, and Tyler, where are you at? This is Tyler right here. He was the only student in the state who made, he auditioned for both the jazz ensemble and the concert band, and Tyler was the only student in state that made both ensembles. Which, and Tyler's a junior trombone player, and Tyler ended up performing with the concert band. He chose that because he liked the literature they were playing better than the jazz band, but he performed with the concert band. We also had Hayden Frankie, who was the first chair oboe in the band, Luke Sitterd, who played guitar with the jazz band. Selena Langfeld made honorable mention, and then, don't want to leave out the orchestra program, they had two students as well that made Allstate, Zack Smith and Nadia Smith. Another huge accomplishment for our students, we had nine events go to State Soul Ensemble Festival, seven of those events got Ones, including Selena Langfeld, who got a perfect score out of 100. Two events got a Two. Based on their performance at state, we had several students selected for Michigan Youth Arts Festival, they played at the beginning of May in Kalamazoo. Huge, huge, huge honor. It's like Allstate of Allstate of Allstate. Those students were Hayden Frankie, an oboe, Selena Langfeld, an oboe, Trent Evans on clarinet, Luke Sitterd on guitar for the jazz band, Nadia and Zack Smith again, and Paige Palmer got selected to try out for the Michigan Youth Arts Festival solo competition on violin. Last but not least, just to acknowledge where these students go, Hayden Frankie, who is a senior oboe player, is going to major in music education and performance at the Jacob School of Music at Indiana University, which is one of the top music schools in the country. Trent Evans, who I was hoping was gonna be here by the time I got done talking. Trent is majoring in music education at Central Michigan University, plays the clarinet. Luke Sitterd is going to North Texas University, which is the top jazz school in the United States, and he will be majoring in jazz studies to play guitar. And then we had one other band student, Nadia Burgess, who's a member of the OSAC program, and next year, she will major in music education as well. So, I think that's it. I think I got it. Yeah. If you're a band student, stand up. There's several band students in the audience, so stand up and...
Thank you, sir. Bridges High School? Or do we have Leonard in OES?
Uh, Bridges is coming.
Alright. Glad you were fine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, tonight I'd like to recognize Wendy Reyes, and we are very proud of her. She earned the By Literacy Seal. She graduated in June, and is going on to college, she'd like to be a lawyer. But this seal is very cool, it allows her, I think it'll open some doors for her, just having it. She also gets some, so this is for you, Wendy.
Certificate.
Certificate of Proficiency. And unfortunately, her middle name was incorrect on her diploma, so when she gets her diploma, she will also get a seal on it. So it's recognized to the state of Michigan, and this will open doors for her with regards to her future showing that she is dual-language, so we're very proud of her.
Mr. Reber, if you could, because this was due to us this year, may you quickly explain to people what the By Literacy Seal is?
Sure. It's a program, oh yeah, I gotta use the microphone. It is a program by the MBE that was started this year. It's in several states as well, about 30 states, that recognizes language proficiency in English and another language, a second language, and the requirements are that they have to meet certain proficiency standards on standardized assessment, as well as meet graduation requirements, and as well as the English graduation requirements as well, so that they are proficient in two languages, so it's quite an honor, and congratulations.
Wendy, congratulations. OVA? More medals. They're so heavy, gotta help hold them up?
So, it would be an honor to present Mr. Christian Johnson. He's the second grade, just completed his second grade at OVA, and I understand he likes math, but he also loves sports, thus, the swimming medals, so. Quite a few guys, I think, people were kind of looking at him thinking, huh, I want one of those, right? He's pretty shy about it. So he swims at the aqua club at the high school, he started the school year in level seven at the swim school, was moved up to the junior one team. He has participated in six swim meets over the season, he was very excited about his first-ever swim at a long-course pool in Windsor, Canada. Way cool. He has dropped time and has placed first or second in a lot of the eight and under events he has participated in, his favorite stroke to swim is the butterfly. So well done, Christian, we're so excited for you, looks like you have lots of great plans going forward.
Great job, Christian. OSAC?
So, OSAC, Mr. Suckley is going to introduce our honored student tonight. The one thing I can say about Griffin is I asked him, what's his favorite thing about OSAC, and what'd you say?
The flexibility.
Flexibility.
Being able to get my work done quick and...
So we were talking about the tan. He's got the tan going on, but he's been out of school since May, because he finished his college classes and his online classes, so Mr. Suckley has some great words to speak about Griffin and why he was honored tonight.
So Griffin is a third-year OSAC student, and he actually started at OVA in seventh grade. Sixth grade. So he's been with us for quite a while. He is a performer, as if you can tell with his things, who dreams of working on the stage professionally. During this school year, he gets to train in dancing, singing, and acting, while simultaneously training in Tang Tso Do, which he has a third-degree black belt. Pretty impressive. Griffin has been working on numerous community theater programs over the past few years, and he has performed and choreographed as well. This past dance season, Griffin earned the title of Mr. Senior Dance Force Express and Mr. Senior Legacy, which I have no idea what it means, so he'll tell us. Throw him under the bus.
Oh geez, you want me, oh gosh. Essentially, that just means I went to a dance competition, and those, like, Dance Force Express is in the name of a dance competition, and Legacy Dance is a dance competition, and that means I earned a title, so that means my solos and duos and anything that I competed in gave me points, and when they all added up together, I had the highest points added up together, so.
Nice job. Oxford Middle School.
I know you just take the largest screw for the last, right?
So, I just couldn't bring one or two kids, I had to bring forty-seven in the family. So, at Oxford Middle School, you know, I could go on and on for days about our students and our staff, but tonight, we are here to recognize students in the areas of the arts, academics, and athletics. So Assistant Principal Kristy Sandersat is going to begin with the arts. Good evening, everyone. Just gonna have my students follow me this way, I'll just line up over here. Alright, wonderful. So, I have a lot of students to recognize this evening. The first three students have received recognition for having their artwork selected for a permanent gallery at the middle school. So, our first one, it's actually, this is the sibling, he wasn't able to be here, so Esme is representing our brother, Aiden, while he plays baseball. So, this is his piece right here. Our next student is Malena Pugliese, seventh grade student. Eighth grade student is Emma Smiley. And all of these will be hung up in the middle school, if you come in by our office, you'll be able to see them from years and years and years, so congratulations, girls, thank you. Ethan Farwell, will you please join us up here? Thank you. So I think as everyone came in, you probably saw his, one of his pieces back there, thank you. He actually entered into the Scholastic Arts and Writing Competition, and more than 6,400 students entered into this competition, and two of Luke's pieces were chosen and displayed for the month of February at College for Creative Studies. Congratulations. Our next group of students, some performed at the solo ensemble and received superior rating, which is very hard to get. We have Nora Chappa, Ivy Jewell, Lola Piper, Esme Rota, and Mallory Wallace. Girls, you wanna step forward so we know who you are? Good job, girls. And our last group for the arts, these students auditioned and were selected for the State Honors Choir. They represented Oxford well and performed at the Michigan Music Conference in January. We have Caitlin Comless, Catalina Ethkowitz, Julie Jones, Abigail Perizzo, and Ella Pisner. Good job. I'm getting a mic over to Mr. Spurma for academic, sorry, yes, yes.
Alright, guys, come on. So this has been a really wonderful year for the middle school as far as academic achievement, and there are many, many more kids who would love to have come up here, so we felt that we gave you a pretty good sampling here with the accomplishments of these very fine young people. So Catalina and Callan, this is Catalina Ethkowitz, you've already met her, and this is Callan Gross. Two eighth-grade students, they attended the thirty... Two eighth grade students, they attended the Thirty-Fifth Michigan Chinese Schools Chinese Speech Contest held by the Michigan Chinese Educators Association on April the twenty-eighth. This Oxford's first time attending and competing with Chinese learners from other school districts. Catalina placed second place on her speech test that was out of all the schools that do offer Chinese. And then Callum placed fourth place. So this is a very, very huge accomplishment. So if you can give them a round of applause. All right, Andrew, step up. So in the world of robotics, this is Andrew Hazelton, another one of our eighth graders. And Andrew created a mobile app using Java which monitors the actions and results of their competitors' robots. This app called the scouting application is created and used every year by OMS Robotics teams. The app helps the teams gather data on other teams' robots thereby helping the teams to strategize. Andrew presented this app to the high school team and traveled with them to teach and support them with the app even at the world's competition. So this is one of our eighth graders coming up that stuff. It's a huge accomplishment. And then finally, our last group, Andrew, you're up one more time, buddy. So we've got Andrew Hazelton, Kayla Casper, McKenna Prasekka, Sophia Champagne, Claire Spindler, and Madeline Stevens. These individuals during the course of their middle school experience maintained a four-point-oh GPA from sixth through eighth grade. It's a really wonderful feat that they've accomplished and we're very, very proud of all they've done this year. Good luck.
And finally, we would like to introduce you to some of Oxford's finest athletes. And I also have Coach Dravnic. She is our cross-country and our track coach. And he is going to speak a little bit about all of these amazing, look at these, still coming in, record holders.
So first, we'll start with cross-country. So we have four new additions to the record board. It's exciting that the three boys are all coming back next year. They're just sixth and seventh grade. So Xavier Clark, just put your name. Elaine Kusick. Kyle DiMolanta. And Alex McCarver. So for cross-country, in addition to the record holders, we had the girls who are the county champs. So some of the numbers aren't here, but of the top seven that are, Elaine Kusick. Olivia Dravnic. Jenna Hickey. And Addison Lester. Carly Boyd, Peyton Fitzpatrick, and Ava Kettler, who are not here today. Then on the track, our Oxford Middle School track team this year had two-hundred-and-eighty-eight kids. It was pretty amazing. So the boys, four-by-four, they were county champs, the next four boys there, and they set the school record. And they also have, I believe it's the fourth fastest time in the state of Michigan for middle school. So Evan Kuzner. Luke Robb. Jack Smith. And Travis Swanson.
And just a quick, I'm gonna interject here for a second. I think our boys, they did really well this year, so did our girls, but one of the things that this team had, they worked together really well, but they kept on keeping on, I guess keep on keeping on. This is their baton and it's an honor and recognition of their classmate Braden. So that's kind of a cool thing. Can you take a little extra help?
All right, so next, our girls team, they kind of rewrote the record board this year. So you're gonna see a number of them repeated. So a school record in the four-by-two relay, we have Olivia Dravnic again. And Olivia McCarrwitz. And Jenna Capel. And Peyton Fitzpatrick, who was mentioned for cross-country, isn't here today. The next record that they broke, this was really impressive because not only did they break the school record and win the county championship, but they also shattered the county record. So they're the number-one team in the state and top ten in the country. So we have Olivia Dravnic. Make sure you wave your hands at weekends. Alyssa Cool. And Olivia McCarrwitz. Another relay that was broken this year was the four-by-eight relay. And we have Elaine Kusick. And then the sixth grader Brady Elling. Addison Lester again. And Ava Kettler, who's not here. Finally, for track, we have three individual records. So with Ariana Hubbard broke the shot put record over there. Ava Kettler, who's not here, broke the eight-hundred record. And then Olivia Dravnic broke the four-hundred record. And here's the speed link for wrestling.
Thank you so much. Great job. And yeah, so we did have two-hundred-and-eighty-eights students join us for track this year. Mr. Sprowell runs their eligibility, so he knows that there are two-hundred-and-eight-hours of eligibility running and they're all really great students. So let's have our wrestlers kind of come up in front of our track athletes where Travis and Jack can join us. Our wrestling team this year were county champions once again, and we also had eight county champs. Only four of them are here with us tonight, but I'd like to recognize all of these eighth graders that are moving on. Jack Smith. And Travis Swanson. And finally, Levi Garcia. So we have a couple sixth and seventh graders to round that out, but these, all of these eighth graders are gonna be a fine addition to Oxford High School in the arts, the athletics, and the academics. So thank you.
Oxford Middle School, thank you very much.
It's not like they should. There is no limit. I don't give a limit. Maybe next year.
O.A. Oxford High School Robotics.
Hi, I'm Tyler Chris from Team Tork, the Oxford Rockettes. We're here today to review a presentation on our season one. This is our team feature behind you. We have forty-two students and twenty-nine mentors. First off, I'd like to say thank you. We'd like to say thank you for your support and sponsorship during our season and those to come. This is not possible without you guys, but thank you.
Okay, so every year, FIRST issues a challenge. The challenge this year was called FIRST Power Up. It was centered around a video game type theme. The objective of the game was to pick up these yellow cubes originally just milk crates and put them in structures around the field. And also, another key component was to be able to climb during the end game of the competition. It takes, FIRST gives you six weeks of time to build this. It's very challenging. This is basically what you produce at the end of the year. This year, we focused on just a simple design with elevator and mechanism for grabbing the cubes. It also hooks at the top to grab hold of the scale and climb in the end game. We used suckers to complete this for enhanced performance and it was programmed in Java. At the end of the competition season, we placed in the top fifteen percent of all robots in the state of Michigan and the top twenty-five percent of all robots worldwide.
So our team also focuses on changing the culture. We do this by engaging our students, our schools, and our community in STEM activities. Two awards that we had won this year focus on how we are able to make STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math, more fun and attainable. The Chairman's Award focuses on what we have done for that within the last four to five years, where engineering inspiration is the last one to two. The Dean's List Award honors the students who show leadership and personal growth in FIRST. We had two students selected to compete at the district competition where we had one of our nominees to win and move on to the state competition. At the Waterford District Competition, we won the Chairman's Award. And then at the Belleville Competition, we won the Engineering Inspiration Award. At the state competition, we won the Chairman's Award. And then at the world competition, we won the Engineering Inspiration. We were one of the six teams to win out of the three-thousand-seven-hundred about teams in the world.
Hello, I'm Elliot, one of the four graduates this year, including one OSAC student. We ended up having a total of one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars worth of scholarships this year, one including a first robotics scholarship. We all are interested in the STEM careers such as mechanical engineering, computer science, pre-med, and chemistry, and will be attending Kettering University, Central Michigan University, and Southern Valley State University.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie. And in just a few moments, to wrap things up, we would like to show you our Chairman's Award video. This video is part of our Chairman's Award submission process. And this video shows who we are as a team, what we do with our community, and how we impact not only our students, but our community, our competitors, and the world around us. And it explains how we are changing the culture from being a robot-focused group to one that encourages learning in STEM and inspire other students. But basically powering students to grow the knowledge of science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics.
We build robots, or more than that. Tork is empowering students to become real-life leaders.
To me, Tork is not just where we have to work together, it's a team.
My favorite part of Tork is working together to accomplish our goals. Through Tork, I have discovered that I want to go into mechanical engineering. I really enjoy helping other teams complete their robot at our annual week zero event.
One of the things I like to do is go back and help younger FTC teams and other teams.
I think helping students be safe is really important and fun.
My favorite part about being at Tork is being able to go to competitions and making friends over something I haven't been able to do.
The members finishing gear from Tork in engineering is really special. Coming off the field, Tork was starting to exemplify its values in FIRST. Each year, we participate in numerous humanitarian activities, including giving black suits for American FIRST, so we're named the hall of the brave path, and training CPR and other western skills. In 2015, responding to the water crisis in Flint, Tork helped mobilize and coordinate the water drive that included ten other FIRST teams and members of the community. The drive provided three-thousand-one-hundred gallons of cases of water to residents in need. In the area of STEM, our Oxford First Family Peter System provides experiences to students of every age through demonstrations and mentoring. The increased interest we generated in our community has resulted in equipment clean of our APOL teams and training of our IDC teams in the past two years. As competitors, we work hard to provide support while also competing with other teams. These efforts include donating cards to clubs to help recruit new teams. We also help teams practice and include the robots through our annual week zero event, as well as lending assistance to those in need at competitions. Last, we're one of our members choosing the first ever student selected to participate in the FIRST regional program. Through this program, a member has helped ensure the successful start of new teams in the Australian and Outback. He now mentors team number one thirty-two at Macquarie University in Australia.
On a personal note, thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for showing me around. It can be intimidating going down there, so I appreciate it.
We appreciate the school's support and your support. And like the title says, it's not possible without you guys. Thanks very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Oxford High School Athletics.
All right, it is my privilege to introduce you tonight and my honor to introduce our championship teams from the winter and the spring. We have six teams that we want to honor tonight. First, I'd like to invite Jackie Rank, head coach of the boys swim team. They were the OAA white champs. She can introduce her representative.
Hi there. Yes, so our boys swim and dive team went nine-and-oh this season and won the white division. That's the first swim and dive team that has won the white league. We've won the blue league in the past. We had never won the white league. We had six boys, including freshman Zach Beatty, continue on to the state championships at Eastern Michigan University. He was our fastest freshman this year. He also finished second in his two individual events at our league meet, was named all-league in the five-hundred freestyle and as part of the four-hundred freestyle relay. I'm very excited to have him back, as well as our returning freshmen, sophomores, and juniors from this year.
Great job.
Next up, the finger goose, wrestling head coach Ross Winger. The wrestling team was the OAA red champions, they were the district champions, as well as the regional champions.
Good evening. Thank you for having us and taking the time to show appreciation and I guess some congratulations to our guys that put in a lot of work and then for everybody else as well. You forgot, did you say district as well? Okay, I just had to make sure that was in there. Gotta give these guys their accolades. We had a very, very successful year this year. Out of our fourteen weight classes in the end, we ended up sending eight to state and made six of them all-state with two of my returning all-state wrestlers right here, Matthew Curtis and Liam Hillary. Of the eight that we sent to state, six of them are coming back. And as you saw earlier, we have some very talented young men coming into the program that have worked hard. So we're very excited for the future and appreciate your support.
Thank you so much. Great job, guys.
Next up was our boys bowling. Junior Laffner is the head coach. They won the OAA red championship.
Thank you. We also won the Oakland County Championship for the second year in a row. I have two of our representatives here and one that's on the golf team back there. But these two gentlemen were all-state. Christian is first-team all-state and is going to be bowling for the University of Northwestern Ohio going forward. That is over two-thirteen for the season. His brother Tanner was second-team all-state. And these guys, four-year varsity bowlers, they were never defeated in the OAA red division for four years. The winningest two bowlers we've had in our program. Again, they are the, five years in a row, we've won the OAA red. And again, those guys are a big part of that. a big part of that. Our girls team this year won the Oakland County Championship, and they've got a little something they want to present to you guys. We got a little run here at the end of the season, and we won the state championship for Oxford. Junior Mary Ann Brewster, junior Claire Samstrom, senior Jenny Legault, senior Deanna Stazer, freshman Grace Meyer, sophomore Maya Bruno, my assistant coach Fred Heikel, also my boys' assistant coach back here, Steve, he won't even stand up, that's why you guys, both of those guys are Oxford graduates, and I couldn't do anything without those guys. But that is the first state championship in our bowling's history, only the fourth state championship in, mother and Brewster, if you and me alike, in the history of Oxford schools. So, we're very proud of that, and it was a very exciting day for us. Also, I wanted to point out, our middle school team, just this last couple of weeks, concluded their season. They have two team championships and an individual singles champion. So, we've got a nice future program, and it was with the help of Mr. Weaver that that got started many years ago. So, thank you very much, and enjoy the championship trophy.
Great job.
Next up, I'm going to go to our spring sports here. We have our girls tennis team, they won the OA blue championship. This is Gail Bailey, our head coach.
Good evening, I'm Gail Bailey. This is my fifth year since starting the program. We, our program continues to grow. Of the five years, or five seasons, this is our third year being the OAA blue. So, the program continues to grow. I'm losing eight seniors this year, representing, one of them is captain Sydney Young, who will be going to Coastal Carolina and South Carolina in August. So, we'll have somewhere to visit when the snow hits Michigan. She didn't know that, she knows that now. Anything else? I don't know, I'm blessed to be coaching an amazing group of girls, not only on the court, but off the court as well. They boast a 3.87 as a team, which I lovingly call them the biggest group of nerds ever, but in the most loving way, so thank you so much.
Great job.
And last, come on, we have our boys golf, Coach Terry Kelly, they're the OAA white champions.
Thank you for reminding me that, they've changed us from white to blue, they go back and forth, so we wear white this year. Thank you. Yeah. Coaching golf is a lot of fun, and it's really a lot simpler than you might think. You just scavenge around the buildings, thirty-five, thirty guys who can't count past four. OAA white champions, undefeated in League nine hole matches, won both League 18 hole tournaments, set team and league records for both of those events. Lost only twice outside those dual matches. Our strong finish in seven additional 18-hole tournaments. Big reason for our success were our two seniors here. Tommy O'Toyle was our co-captain, leading scorer, who's a good leader who accepted a scholarship to join two other Oxford players competing for a nationally respected program in junior college at Oakland Community College in a couple of months. Dean Peterson, also a very steady player for us, will be competing in August for OCC as a walk-on. Good luck, boys, we're proud of you. We have, also had all four of our starting four players got all-league in the white division. You guys have maintained the highest standards of behavior and achievement that we've come to enjoy in Oxford golf, and we appreciate you and will miss you. And board members, thank you very much for the opportunity to make the hill before us. We appreciate that too.
Hey, coach, if I had any eligibility, I might try out because I can't count past three.
Have we missed anyone? Any recognition that we've missed? Mr. Steppich?
Hello? Hey, Mr. Ed, just stick around for a minute. You missed him. We have a ski team that's combined with Mount Holly, or I mean with Holly High School, so it's a Holly-Oxford ski team. And our boys team, we sent one person to the state finals, but the biggest achievement I think that they made is they were number one in the state academic as a team. They have the highest grade point average as the, in the entire state, so I think that deserved.
And I think, I just, I would just like to say that a day like today reminds you of why it's great to be a board member and what a great school district we are. And I guess I want to say, besides recognizing all these students, they don't get what they, they don't get where they got if it isn't for great coaches, volunteers, and staff. I just wish they all were still here, because kudos, kudos to all the hard work that everyone is doing. Thank you so much for making us a great school district. It's great to be a Wildcat. Now we go on to other business. That was more fun. That was just a lot more fun. Board of Education matters, the purchase of the Chromebooks. If you recall in our last meeting, there was a motion to, and we approved it, then we realized that something was dropped off the list that was supposed to be added to the list. So, you see a motion that takes your 66,755.32 and raises that to 72,705.32. And so, would someone like to get the motion in and we can discuss if necessary? Mr. Steppich, second?
I can read it first.
Oh, read the motion, then I'll give a second. Nice job.
Help each other. I move to amend the May 22, 2018 motion for purchase of Chromebooks for the middle school in the amount of 66,755.32 to include seven 36-unit Chromebook carts with power switch and trays, parentheses, $5,950, for a total purchase of 72,705.32.
Thank you, now is their support. Dan, and a second?
Yes.
I made the motion.
You made the, okay.
I made the motion, he supported it.
Thank you.
Now, may discussion?
It's been so much fun. Now, get back into business. All right, all right, all right. Any discussion? Yes, Heather?
I'm just going through my notes. This is all general budget, right, from curriculum and technology and OVA and all that, is it?
Yes, secondary, the chief's budget. And there was a slight adding issue on the invoice that we caught. The us, we supplied it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a motion on our coming-up year for our scheduled board meetings. Dan?
Move to approve the 2018, 2019 Board of Education meetings as presented.
Is there support? Mr. Steppich?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Weaver, curriculum and instruction?
All right, we have the first presentation, we have the ELA 9 through 12. They'll be discussing their request that will be coming at the next board meeting for the purchase of new ELA resources. So, this is Elka Tinsky, and this is Gibbons, who will go ahead and present.
Hi, Kevin. I'm 95.
I actually, let me see, I get, um...
I'll go ahead, let's start with Melissa, votes our presentation, it's short. And first, I'd like to thank you for having me, so you're judging tonight, happy summer night. And we have not been up for curriculum revisitation, we haven't asked for an expenditure such as this, since I worked in the high school, which is not the middle school, so that gives you an idea of how long it's been, and our textbooks are in disrepair, and we've just noticed our own need to grow and change as an ELA department, to update our curriculum. So, tonight, our presentation should be up shortly, but to let you know, we probably spent around 15 school days as a department, along with co-teachers, and collaborating with people from Oakland schools and administrators from high school to go through a very detailed and thoughtful process. We wanted to put a lot of thought to avoid making easy decisions, and then slide show or five short slides, we're going to walk you through our process. So, we started with why we're doing this, and we really thought about what we value as teachers and as a collective department, and what we felt is best for empowering our students to become prepared in the 21st century workplace with college and career readiness. Those bullet points mention empowering the students and helping them grow their confidence, helping them overcome weaknesses, gaining independence if learners, along with a few The next step in our process was considering what would drive our decision-making, and we looked at where we had holes and gaps in our curriculum, and where we were missing in particular our standards in the Common Core. We noticed that in some standards we covered ad nauseam, and other standards we were drawing altogether, not really on purpose, just because we hadn't been through this process together. And we noticed that we would like to scaffold grammar, grades 9 through 12, implement more research, both small-scale and formal research, and larger-scale research projects, grades 9 through 12, building our previous knowledge and experience, adding those final US historical documents that are such a huge part, especially for grades 11 and 12 in the Common Core, and finally allowing our seniors to fill that preparation need before they enter the workplace or head off to university.
The next slide, no, I have it. Oh, you can, yeah, okay, so I can talk about it if you can see it. So, when we started this process, we decided through, with help of planning and then help from Oakland schools, which sources we needed to look at, how to pilot which sources, and so we decided on two textbooks that have actually all come with the same materials within them. The first one was My Perspectives. So, each teen level, 9, 12, did a unit out of the My Perspectives book. And then the second pilot was Springboard, given to us from the College Board. The 12th grade did not pilot that one because our seniors were gone. So, they kind of looked at it and they had feedback from the rest of us to come to their decision. And then we went through a program list and looking at which one offers the most for the money that we have, as well as which one is filling our holes. That was the biggest thing. And as Lesley was speaking, our holes were really the grammar, the research, and then those historical texts. So, we decided on the College Board's Springboard material, we felt that one did the best job of covering the holes that we had in 9, 12.
Close your eyes and just pretend you're seeing a color.
Well, one, I would like to say, the last slide that you didn't get to see, really is where we had a collaborative Google data where all of us listed what we thought were the pluses of the materials we're asking the school work to pay for, for our department, and then for our students, and you kind of have the financial details, of course, but I have a list of positives, if you'd like to hear them, they're also listed in the last slide, if you can go and look at that later. And you might have it in front of you?
We had it.
We have it.
We had it in our works.
I didn't see it, so I was just going to get it.
Just quickly, I'd like to just add, the ELA department is under the direction of Molly Darnell, who's the six-year-12 ELA coach, along with the department up here, have done a fantastic job of really analyzing, rolling up their sleeves and looking at the curriculum, what they have for resources, the way they're currently presenting it, really being honest with themselves and having some tough conversations and looking at the curriculum. And they've done a fantastic job, they've been extremely diligent, so what we ended up doing was rolling the process over into a second year to give them time to write the curriculum. And since the ELA curriculum is dependent on a lot of the text and so forth, there's a lot more creativity, we really felt we needed the resources as we go to write the curriculum. Otherwise, it would be standards not really attached to a whole lot. So, we're going to get the curriculum. They really spent, like I said, the whole year looking at what they're currently doing, what needs to be done, brought in help from Oakland schools, and I think we've made a really, they did a great job with the pilot, and they've really made a sound choice. Actually, quite frankly, both of the products that they were choosing from rated out extremely high and were very well-respected, and couldn't go wrong if they believe either one, but I'm really excited for the choice that they made, and looking forward to next year as we begin writing the curriculum and beginning that process as well, so thank you. And I will, they are in the process of getting quotes, and I will bring those to the board in two weeks, so.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work, and love the collaborative approach, it's awesome.
Yes, and if you want to look at a unit, it's not final, but we've worked on one today for grade 11, it's in Atlas, unit one. And so, at any school during the week, to see how detailed and just challenging the unit will be for our kids to draw this on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next presentation and curriculum resource request, they're kind of along the same lines, will be Mrs. Barron and Mr. Heets from the middle school, and they will be talking about their request for the I-CW.
Since I've been at the middle school for the last five years, we have been diving into the new curriculum with NGSS. So, when Ken was my administrator when I first went there, he sent me right away. So, we have been looking at this new curriculum for a while. So, the process that we started in, oh, no, it's not. Part of it is. Okay, well, so we followed a similar procedure where we were very diligent with the things that we looked at. The reason why we need this new curriculum is because the state is changing the curriculum. So, this has been in the works for at least the last five years. So, we needed to make sure that we were following suit and following the same standards, help practices of NGSS. So, we did a similar process where we first consulted Oakland schools, and to come up with a list of possible curriculums that we could use to support the NGSS. Then Nathan Spencer brought us an equipped rubric that we used to evaluate four different curriculums. Using that rubric, we came up with two that we wanted to look at. So, we then piloted those two. We spent a lot of time in our PLC making sure that we were really focusing on those NGSS standards, and that we were going to align them of what we were doing with that. Then, once we decided on the two, and we started working on that curriculum piece, then we had to get trained. These are not just curriculums that you can just get and go ahead and do. There is a very specific, very intentional way that they are set up. So, we had to, we had to go through a day's training on each one of those curriculums. So then, each one of our grade levels, six, seven, and eight, we piloted two five-week units in each one of those curriculums. And it was in line with the curriculum that we were currently doing, so it wasn't something that was outside of what we were doing, it fitted with what we are doing now. So, it was again, done with intention. So, after we finished that, we met as a department, Ken was there, and Nathan Spencer was there, our administrators were there. Ken was there and Nathan Spencer was there, our administrators were there, and we went through the whole process and made sure that we were lining up with the NGSS.
Are we actually going to have a last slide?
Keep going, keep going. I'm going for three and a half minutes. Come on. I told Asia three and a half minutes.
Where are we at?
Right, okay. So after we went through and we met as a group and discussed everything, again, it took some time. It wasn't something that we just said, okay, this is what we want. So then we voted, and the decision was to use iQuest. So the iQuest curriculum, and iQuest stands for, and one more, investigating and questioning, investigating, questioning our world through science and technology. It is a mouthful. But it, and the nice thing about iQuest, there's a lot, you can skip to the next one. There's a lot of really good things about iQuest that we discovered. So the reason why we chose iQuest, there's a twelve-unit middle school model. So, and it's supported by the National Science Foundation. Physics, chemistry, life science, and earth science are covered each year. So now, whereas eighth grade really focuses on that earth science piece, they're kind of going without that physics, chemistry, and life science piece in eighth grade. Now, with this curriculum, it's very intentionally set up so that all four are covered in each one of those years, so there are no gaps.
Very different attitude. Maybe that's what Kelly was saying. As a coach, I joined the science team late. I moved in, switched from math and science at the semester. And so I was worried, baseball was coming up, and okay, I've got all this going on, and I've got new curriculum, piloting two different things. And the first one we did was the iQuest program. And it was so much easier for me with everything else that was going on, to work with my part of teachers and coaching at the same time, and tryouts, and a lot, a lot of things going on. The iQuest was perfect. If you say, I mean, there was debate between the two. That was the big thing that I pushed for, is it made my job so much easier for me, new, working with a new team and new curriculum, and it was fantastic.
And the kids are really engaged with it. It's not something that we're just standing up there and doing. It's really investigative. They're really a part of, it's, they're acting like a scientist. They're discovering those core ideas through investigating. So it's a really good, it's a really good fit for us.
Good. Yeah?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so they build understanding by making connections across all disciplines. So it's not just that vertical and horizontal, you're getting both. It's not just throughout the school year, but it also builds year after year. Yeah, and there's a lot of support materials that allows us for that differentiation and instruction. So the reading level, even though a student may be at a lower reading level, there are reading materials there that still have the same concepts, but yet it's at their reading level. So that's a really nice thing. There's a lot of support inside of there. And it also fits really well with the direction that we are in with the IB, that it's really about the NYPD integration, that iQuest really fits well for us to be able to build those IB-aligned curriculum units.
That's it.
That's it. We're done.
Thank you very much. Yeah. The middle school science also as well, they did a fantastic job in the direction as well. Nathan Spencer, who is our science coach, K-12 science coach, they did an excellent job, and it was a very long process. And they're going to do the same basic thing, is it was felt we needed to get the resource, especially with the change with the NGSS standards. It is going to be a point, a time-intensive and laborous change in practices as they get familiar. They've started some of that already, but it really kind of then keeps ramping it up, and it's going to be, we're really excited for them. And the direction this curriculum is going, we decided to be more hands-on and involved with the kids and stuff like that, and they're all very excited. And they did a fantastic job with the selection of the resources, took it very serious, spent quite a time looking at the different products, and then piloted them, coming up with their decision. So we are looking forward to writing curriculum. So, and then the approval will be, is that tonight for this one?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. So I think we're, will you, next, in two weeks, you'll have approval, and the other one, you'll get the quote, and then two weeks later, we'll do approval on that one as well. Okay? Oh, in the Lakeville Middle School literacy program, that was a little miscommunication between me and Mrs. Marshall, and eventually Mrs. Ball, and I gave Mrs. Ball the wrong information, so I apologize. Just a lot of things to handle at the end of the school year, so, thank you. They went earlier in the presentation. It's all right. A lot of things we were handling. All right, board members, we have a couple motions under curriculum instruction. The bodies aren't absorbing the sound anymore. Yes, Heather?
I have to read it?
Please.
Move to approve the Oxford Virtual Academy curriculum through BookShark, Florida Virtual, and E-Dynamic for the 2008-2019 school year.
Thank you. Is there support? Mr. Steppich? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Heather, you want to, Heather, you want to be the next one?
Sure. Move to approve the purchase of items through Activate Learning at a cost of $126,131.12 as presented.
Support? Dan?
Thank you.
Discussion?
What was that again? Activate Learning. Just remind me.
What is Activate Learning?
Yes.
Was Activate Learning Ola or?
It's kind of grand.
What is it?
That's why I'm late.
No, Activate Learning, $126,000, that is the science materials.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I thought they, it goes by iQuest, but actually the company is Activate Learning. iQuest is the company that developed the materials, and then Activate is the one that actually sells. So that's, that is the iQuest?
Yes.
Yes. Or pack. Got it. All right. So board members, you're all straight on that? That's on the presentation we just heard?
Yes.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, Mr. Barna, Finance and Operations.
Good evening, everyone. The first thing I have on the agenda is an update for the board in regards to safety and security. And I just wanted to talk about some of the things that we've been doing the last, the last time since we reported to you in May. We do have some new equipment that was installed in the district. Specifically, I believe I mentioned the high school the last time in May, but I wanted to give a brief update on that to let you know that the two front doors are indeed operational. They've been operational for at least the past two and a half to three weeks. So those doors now both have what's called the Aphone system, which is the video conferencing system, in addition to HID readers, which obviously accept badge swipes as well. So for individuals coming in that have a badge, they're able to get into either door. In addition to that, one of the doors that's closest to the pack, or those two sets of main front doors, also has the handicap accessibility as well for some of those, several of those students who may be handicapped within the district. So we wanted to let everyone know that that has been integrated within that door in particular. In addition to that, we have another update for OELC. That is the fact that there was one door that did not have Aphone access for OELC. Specifically, it was the office area for Washiya and her staff. And so Tony was able to get that actually installed by one of the companies that we use, Eagle Security. And so that has been done within the past week. Is that correct, Tony?
Yes.
Within the past week?
Yes.
So, so those are the two latest installs. But in addition to that, we are still looking at obtaining quotes for the gate that will be located here near the pack, the service entrance driveway that goes alongside the building. And so we're looking to have a gate entrance put in as well with having a card access as well. So we're looking to get those numbers back, and hopefully, we'll probably be bringing that to the board, because I would assume that's going to be over our threshold, Tony. Is that your, that your guess as well?
I hope not.
I hope not as well, but just to let the board.
We're, we're, I also, we're getting some numbers.
Sure. So if it indeed exceeds the threshold, we'll be coming to the board for approval of the purchase and installation of the gate, along with all the electronics as well that go along with that. Okay? In addition to that, speaking of the high school as well, Tony is actually, we just had the entrance painted. I don't know if many of you realize the bright Oxford paint that is on the curbs now, but that's just a very small portion of what's going to be updated. We're also going to be installing, actually, Tony, you had called them, what was the name that you gave me? Ballards? Short ballards? So ballards from basically the tennis courts all the way up past the area where there is the practice, the practice fields along, along the west side of the parking lot.
We're looking at doing a combination of wooden ballards and metal ballards with caps, plastic caps on. And that's to keep the traffic from being able to drive down into the fields. And we're going to have the wooden ones down by the tennis courts to help secure that. And what it will be is they'll be about every four and a half foot apart. They're not going to be very tall. They're going to be like forty-two inches high.
Like posts, you say?
They're posts. They're basically posts. And the ones that are going to be up towards the pack and along the practice field and that, we want to get nicer ones. We want to actually get steel ones with the plastic caps in the blue, so they would be short, and so, you know, the kids will be able to get through there and into the practice field and the band and all that. But you won't be able to get a vehicle out there. So that's, that's the plan right now, and we're in the process of getting the pricing there. So we thought that would look nicer up by the building, and as you get away from the building, we go a little less expensive, and we get the wooden ballards that we've placed down along there. Thank you.
Furthermore, there's going to be, Tony is appearing signage along that whole area as well. Towaway signs, you know, warning signs for those that currently do park.
So people park there all the time?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, it's going to probably.
It's like no parking?
It's no parking. We're going to just, we're going to put more signage up there. We're putting in, we painted up the curbs and that for the no parking. We're going to actually get an electronic gate, you know, so unless you have, you know, a card reader to get in there, and we'll be able to issue cards through the athletic department and through, you know, the kitchen, through carriage programs. You can have that, you can give it to a delivery people and that, you'll have, you know, you'll have, and these cards will, it's just like the ones we use in the buildings, but they'll be scheduled, so they'll be issued to coaches and stuff like that. They'll be able to use during the season, won't be able to get in there. If you wanted to just deactivate them, you can deactivate them, you can tell who's coming through the gates, who's going through there. We also have a camera that's right on the corner of the building there. We're going to upgrade that camera and we'll do, to get one with more of a more flat lens in there and stuff like that, so we'll be able to monitor that corner a little bit better on there.
Okay.
Black on a.
Black on a, that's right. Busy summer.
So that's, you know, we're going to continue to look throughout the summer, though, at just basically doing a further assessment in terms of either Aphone, video conferencing systems if necessary, or any other types of entrances that we need to look at. So there's going to be, obviously, continued review throughout the summer as well. Furthermore, we just received, after we purchased some additional night lock devices, when we did a walkthrough throughout the district this past several months, we did realize that there were several doors that needed to have night locks that weren't originally installed with night locks, the lockdown devices. And so that will be happening over the summer as well.
Is that like a discount or?
No, that was just individuals who basically, that was potentially a discount, but it wasn't just a discount. I mean, there was situations where, when we went through originally with the night lock security company, certain doors were designated, and we tried to keep the costs down. And quite frankly, it became apparent through what we viewed, as well as through just talking with our staff, that additional night lock devices were needed. Yeah?
And we're just purchasing those and installing them in the house. We're not building a way.
And it's always helpful to have a few extras as well. Moving on to Atlas, so the active shooter training, just as a recap, a refresher from the last time that I gave an update last month, I wanted to let you know that within the district, we had about a ninety-eight percent success rate of getting everyone trained with the online component of Atlas training. And so we're really pleased with that. But furthermore, what we're doing is we're taking that knowledge and then we're training trainers for the live drills. And so myself and Alitha are the most recent individuals, to my knowledge, from an administrative level, that received certified training to do the live drills later on this year. But then we have approximately twelve other staff members throughout the district. In each building, at least one, possibly two, sometimes three, such as the high school, that will be trained to offer this to the rest of our staff. So these are the live training drills that go through the scenarios of an active shooter. That is specifically what I'm referring to. And so again, we plan to get together as a district and start training our staff after our trainers have been trained and certified at the end of August. We'll begin that process. It will continue through at least the first semester, and then on an annual basis, we'll be going through this training as we normally do for other drills, such as tornado and lockdown drills and so on and so forth. So this will be part of our repertoire of training. I want to add to that with some other training that we think is extremely important, and that is not only our CPR training and getting further individuals not only certified, but others that don't have CPR training, get them that training for free through Belmont Health, Belmont Hospitals. But in addition to that, a program that is national called the Stop the Bleed Program. And so we have only a small amount of staff through Washiya's extended day program who received training for the Stop the Bleed back in April, and they thought it was extremely beneficial. We also heard, at least myself and others in administration, about the benefits of having as many people in the district as possible trained on how to basically mitigate a blood loss from a particular individual if a blood loss occurs. And so the statistics are that about twenty percent of those that die of blood loss, massive blood loss, twenty percent of those individuals, if someone was around that could have stopped it, they would have survived. So we want our district staff as much as possible trained in this regard. That being said, we're scheduling at least two sessions, possibly four, throughout the summer on a volunteer basis, and then that's just to get this going, and then we'll make more formal arrangements for further engagement with our staff for Stop the Bleed and CPR going forward. Finally, just procedural changes. I know we talked a lot about the high school specifically. You know, we're going to be reviewing our procedures that we have at a district level for, obviously, you know, just general lockdown procedures, emergency procedures. We're going to be updating those, starting to update those. I know David's in the audience, and obviously, you know, he's going to be starting soon, and so he will hopefully be assisting me as well from a human resources perspective since Nancy is going to be retiring very shortly. So I just wanted to let you know that our focus is going to be on also looking at and updating our procedures as well. And then communication, the changes that we're making, and again, I'm going to refer back to the high school. There's some very contentious issues. We're doing it for the right reasons, for safety and security, but obviously, these individual items need to be communicated not only to our students, but to our parents and the general public as well about changes. So just wanted everyone to be aware of that. So that concludes my safety and security update for June. Is there any questions? Dan?
Mine's more of a question. I just want to thank Sam, Tony, Central Office for really kind of looking at all the opportunities where we can fortify our buildings. You know, vehicles near the school and areas that clearly are not parking spots, it's not just a parking issue, it's a safety issue. Unfortunately, in the world that we live in, these types of things just escalate. So if you can limit the amount of vehicles that are right next to a building, it's a safety issue in my opinion. to a building, it's a safety issue in my opinion. So I want to thank you for...
Thank you for bringing that up.
...addressing that and kind of taking the lead on it.
Thank you.
...to save as possible.
Well, first, I'm glad you brought that up. And so thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. But what I wanted to allude on with that was the fact that, you know, we're not looking to do this to, you know, obviously do it for any other reason than safety and security. And specifically, the changes that are going to be occurring in the parking lot at the high school. And keep in mind, you know, there are going to be total away signs. You know, we're not going to be receiving any revenue as a school district from this. I want to be very clear. This is strictly from a safety and security standpoint, as you stated. So thank you.
Anything else? All right, Sam. B?
What we have here is the presentation of the 2017-18 final amended budget as well as the 2018-19 original budget. Right here, it's starting to go over. So what you see here is what was in your board packet. I did actually alter it slightly from your board packet. I included a variance legend up in your left-hand corner, color-coded. And I did that just to actually, after the last budget meeting we had last month in May, Tom and I spoke after the board budget meeting and just discussed on possible ways to make this potentially easier to read. And so I wanted to add some color coding specifically for the variances that you see as the percentages here in column T. This right here is again the final amended budget. The variance legend with the red shows that any variances that are greater than a positive ten percent will be shown in red. And normally, those will be, will have an explanation beside them. Variances between five and ten percent will be in gray. And then variances between two and five percent will be in yellow. And then variances that are less than two percent would be in green. And generally wouldn't have an explanation associated with them. However, if asked, I'm sure that I could give you the facts behind it. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that legend and why it's there. You didn't see it in your board packet. And so that's the explanation there. So what I'm going to do is try to slowly go through each of the line items. The first one I'll go through is the enrollment. What you're going to focus on is the original budget that was obviously created last year. Standing up here, I was going over the original budget. I assumed a flat count of five thousand eight hundred and eighty students are FTE. And what happened now with the final amended budget, based upon our ninety and ten count, ninety percent in the fall, ten percent in the spring, we have a blended count of six thousand one hundred and seventy-three students are FTE for an increase of almost five percent. And so, you know, you'll ask yourself, why is that? I'm sure you're all well aware. But just to reiterate, it's largely due to the Virtual Academy. So kudos to the Virtual Academy. So I want to now continue that. So below, obviously, what drives revenue predominantly for any public school district in the state of Michigan is enrollment and the per pupil foundation allowance. And so the local revenue from original budget back last year to the final amended today, I have an increase of two point two six percent. That is primarily due to an increase in property tax collection that we have seen and the actuals that have flowed through from all of the townships and from all of the taxing authorities. In addition to that, we have a state seven point five percent, a little bit over state revenue. Why is that? Well, we received this year a hundred and twenty dollars more per pupil in the foundation allowance. But really, we factored that in last year anyway at this time. But I just wanted to mention that. What the real difference is, is the increase in enrollment, obviously. And so at those two hundred, or that five percent increase from OVA translated into a lot higher state revenue. And that's why you see such a nice figure there. We also did receive what's called an unfunded liability payment. Basically, it's to, we received revenue as a district to compensate us for the retirement of the unfunded liability of our staff. But then we had to take in that revenue and then send it back out the door. So it's called a pass-through. But you'll see that within our revenue as an increase. But what you're going to see, or maybe what you won't see because it's buried across all of our functions, is that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars flowing back out. So again, it's a pass-through, but that contributes to the seven point five percent increase in that category. As you see here under federal, I'll just swing over here a little bit to federal. A federal increase of two point six, seven percent. We just received a little bit more federal funding than we originally anticipated. And so obviously, a very positive. And the decrease though, that you see here, almost twelve percent, was my overestimation. I take full blame for overestimating what our special education PA eighteen funds are. So I put in a number that didn't come to fruition. And that is why you see a larger variance, hence in red. So what's nice about this is now that I color-coded it, is you could really see where I goofed, which is great. So I can now explain myself of why I goofed. But it's good. You obviously, you learn a lot more, I think, from mistakes than you do from your successes. So, well, very duly noted. And I made sure that I had the latest and greatest when I baked in the PA eighteen for next year. So if you see it in red next year, you know something is really wrong with me this year. So. Overall, six percent increase in revenue, total revenue for the general fund. Let me just go over a little bit more. Again, in yellow, I am estimating that for the year we will end up with a little over sixty million dollars, sixty point one million of revenue for the general fund. And again, the original budget back last June was just shy of fifty-seven million. Okay? For expenditures, what we have here, again, just as a reiteration, we had bargaining unit contractual salaries. Obviously, as everyone knows, or everyone may recall, we passed three-year agreements for all of our bargaining units last year. So that is reflected in these numbers, hence the increase. And staffing. So it's not just the increase, it's also staffing increases as well since the inception of this budget originally last summer to where we stand now. We move down to support services, pupil. You'll see that again, it's the same explanation. Pupil services, support services, it went up two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And a large part of it again was the bargaining unit contracts as well as additional staff. So that's a large part. Again, on average, everyone received three percent this fiscal year, this academic year. But with stat adds, that could swing certain categories, functional categories. And that's why some are higher than others, depending on the staff that was added in that particular function. And just as a reiteration, in case you're aware, when I say function, I mean pupil, instructional staff. That's an explanation of a function. Instructional staff, general administration, very small increases, as you can see, point fourteen percent, one point eighty-eight. If I go down to school administration, staff additions, bargaining unit contractual increases as well. The school administration, just as a reminder, is again, all of our principals, assistant principals, that's what rolls off into that category, just as a reminder. Business, my department, or one of my departments, I should say. Wow, looks like it really shot up. Why did it shoot up? Well, unfortunately, I have to expense tax abatements in the current year against one of my line items or one of my accounts within the business services department. And so a large reason why my budget is projected to go up year over year or first amended versus final is primarily due to the tax abatements that were higher than normally anticipated. As everyone's aware, you know, the economy's doing really well. So I just want to kind of innocently talk about this. But the economy's doing well. Obviously, we had very large increases. And when I say very large, I think there was a four point eight percent increase in taxable values year over year. And so there are several individuals that are fighting that taxable value increase. And so that means if they win, we have tax abatements in the district that we have to expense. Okay? But we are made whole the year after from the state. But we still have to expense them in the year that the tax abatement was approved. Okay? Operations and maintenance, Tony Sergio's, his department, we had an increase of, looks like six hundred and nineteen thousand is what the estimate is. It's a seventeen point eighty-three percent increase. You know, some of the large key factors, while I can tell you right now, as a lot of what we're doing across the buildings is just the maintenance, the operations of these buildings. You know, we had a really bad, just as, I don't know if you recall me telling you this probably about two or three months ago, you lived it, we had a really bad winter. And, you know, our snow removal contract, it was, you know, cheap. We had to, historically, we had to rebid it. And then coupled the rebidding at a higher cost with the fact that we had really a lot of snow and a lot of ice this year. And so that increased our costs. That's a component of that. It's not by any stretch the entire amount. It's a component of that. But I want to give you some reasons as to why you see an increase. But again, the majority of what you see is just across the board, just really fixing, you know, obviously lighting, fixing building entry, you know, you name it, fixing roofing. So obviously, we have a lot of buildings and it takes a lot of money to keep up. And so that's why you see a year over year, budget over budget increase for building and operations. Did I miss anything, Tony, off the top of your head that, you know, you could tell me off the, no, I pretty much covered it, right?
I covered it.
Thank you. In terms of transportation, very small increase, one point five, three percent. So we, you know, we did, we thanked the board from a transportation perspective specifically. We were able to get some used buses this year beyond the bond, some used buses using general fund money, specifically the one that the board just approved. So we thank you. So that is baked in with the numbers in the final amended budget. And then under central here, we have a twenty-eight percent increase in central. And really, what that twenty-eight percent increase is, as a reminder, the federal E-rate program. And we did go to the board with the approval to have up to six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of expenditures. So the vast majority of that money that you see here as an increase is due to E-rate primarily. But we also had some additional overstaffing in that category. We do anticipate getting that six hundred and thirteen thousand dollar E-rate funding. Obviously, the federal government allowed us to get the reimbursement, the full reimbursement. So we are looking to get that reimbursement as quickly as we possibly can this school year to offset that six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars purchases. If not, we'll look at next year. But, you know, unfortunately, it's the federal government. We can only do so much to try to...
Like you tell you, like this is where we're going to...
You know, we confer with our consultant, Convergent Technologies, who helps us with the E-rate, helps us file the E-rate, all the forms. And so they do the best they can to let, but again, it's like any other program, and I hate to say this, but the federal government, it's usually a waiting game.
It's their time to do it.
It's their time. Absolutely. Yes.
So the six fifty, six thirteen is the E-rate?
Yes. But again, it's six thirteen, but I shouldn't say that's a budget lineup. We also have offsets because I expect to get some, you know, some fairly heavy reimbursement from the federal government. So it's probably more like in the high threes, low fours for that true expense. So what I do is I budget an expense. And then when reimbursement comes in, if there is a reimbursement, I'll put it against that expense account so that the net is actually showing up what you truly used as district funds. Okay? So good question though. Furthermore, we have an increase of athletics of ten percent. And a large part of that really isn't truly an increase. And I'll show you why. Really what it is, is again, I go back to B, that I take accountability for goofing, not fully funding several accounts within athletics that I should have funded. And miscellaneous supplies was one of those accounts that I didn't fund fully. I believe it was somewhere around six or seven thousand dollars. It just got missed. I'm not making excuses, but I have several thousand accounts to look at and it just got missed. I think I probably either zeroed it out or put a very low dollar amount. I think I put a very low dollar amount. So that's why, a part of the reason why you see right there, but just to reiterate though, the actual spend in athletics last year that was audited by Yo and Yo was nine hundred and almost eighty thousand dollars. So the, really, when you look at what was actually spent versus what I am projecting, which is in yellow, is not a hugely significant number when you consider that we added some new sports this year as well that I had to fund. So just wanted to clearly kind of put that out there so you have an understanding that it's not just spend, spend, spend. In terms of the last item under the categories here for expenditures that are part of the function, one of the last, I should say, is other. And other's primarily the international program. But it's also some other accounts that are unrelated to the OIT program such as OHS equipment that's throughout the building, as well as auditorium expenses if we're making capital purchases for auditorium to keep up with obviously the latest technology and lighting and so on and so forth. So those expenses in total, year over, or year over year, or I should say, original budget to final amended, were showing almost a nineteen percent decrease. And again, the largest reason for that increase of overall expenditures for that function is really due to the smaller number of students that we had in the international program from what we originally estimated. Furthermore, we have community services here. As you see here, thirty-three thousand dollars is the variance. It went from eleven to forty-five. The biggest reason that was, was not only the microphones that we purchased for the pack that fell into that, but it was also, more importantly, the custodial fees that we started expensing against this particular function code and specifically an account within this function code. But I will want to reiterate that those expenses that have grossly went up, as you see here, because they're such a small dollar amount, are being offset completely by the revenue that we're taking from facilities income that's up in local revenue at the top that I showed you. Just as an FYI, we receive approximately a hundred thousand dollars of facility revenue in the district. And it's primarily tied to the high school. So again, I don't want you to fret by looking at that expense lineup and saying, oh my gosh, we're spending all this money at custodial. Again, it's being offset in completely by the revenue that we take in. Okay?
Sam, you mean when we rent places, churches or wherever?
Correct. Absolutely. Yes. Exactly. Yes, Sam.
When we look at custodial costs, those are costs over and above their contract.
Correct. That is correct. Okay. So our custodial contract covers thirty-four point, I believe it's seven five FTE from our custodial contractor, used to be called GCA. Now it's called ABM. And so that covers a very base level of service, obviously. So anything above and beyond that, whether it's games, special events, athletic, as well as obviously renting our facilities, we get charged for that. So what we're merely doing is passing those costs, you know, to those that rent, as well as to, you know, anyone from the outside as well. In addition to that, and I'm sorry that I'm boring you, obviously, I'm not, look at the crowd that I have here.
Well, it's gone down a little bit.
It's, you know, calm down. I know this is, I know this is scintillating.
Yeah, it really is.
Yep. They're like, one, this is going to stop. Please stop talking. This is outgoing...
Really?
Oh, another one.
Outgoing transfers and other, and this includes...
My chance to have all.
This includes, I asked for it. Including debt and capital outlay. And so what this is, was originally budgeted at nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. It came down, down to a more reasonable number of six hundred and eighty-one thousand. And really what it had to do was a decrease in capital outlay. And specifically, there was one item there that was specifically related to OVA. We had a reduction in OVA expenditures. Last year, we ended up, I think it was a little over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the new OVA space. We didn't have that this year. So that was a drastic decrease year over year. So as you can see, I'll kind of cut to the chase. What we're doing here now, and in yellow is what we're, again, we're focusing on, we're projecting a fund balance at fifteen point four eight percent, which is marginally better than what I originally projected last June. And again, for the reasons that I just specified. So any questions? Okay, I will move on quickly to...
I'm sorry.
Yes?
Thank you. OVA, what an amazing, the effect that you have on the budget. The, you know, Tim was just telling me that our overall seated student rate is very flat. You know, plus eight, minus eight, we're very flat. To have generated over $3 million in a single year has helped us do a lot of things. And so kudos, kudos, kudos to the OVA, you've done a great job.
Yes, sir.
So just a couple of comments for clarification. So this fiscal year, original budget versus final amended budget, this is the first year of three-year contracts across the board. So in that first year, our average was closer to 4% in increase in salaries, where this coming year and the third year is closer to 3%. I just, I want to make that clarification. And also for, yeah, I don't have my glasses, I can't tell. Maybe operation and maintenance. This year, we also updated our contract. And our contract went up by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So not only was it a new contract for snow removal and then having to push more snow, but our general facility maintenance custodial contract, if you recall, that contract itself went up, I want to say maybe a quarter of a million dollars or something like that. So that was a big component of that, so it's not just Tony's salary.
Making the big bucks.
Would you like me to move on to the 18, 19?
Please.
Okay, I will be, I will be. So what you have here, again, is a similar format, the same format frankly. But what you have now in the white, which is in column Q, is what I just went over, which is the final amended budget. So I won't really beat that to death at all, I've already done that. But what I want to talk about is column R, which is the original budget that I'm projecting for 18, 19 for the general fund. I'll start out with, again, the enrollment, the enrollment. As you know, I budget fairly conservatively and that would be a flat enrollment projection. So right now, we're at 6173 and I'm budgeting 6173 next year, okay? At least initially, until we start getting some of our count numbers in the fall. The difference is though, is I'm baking in, and I'm jumping the gun with property tax collection, and I shouldn't. So I'll say, we have an increase here, 3.5% looking at property tax collection year-over-year of 6.2 million versus what we're receiving, or what we're expecting to receive this year. So again, that's primarily due to, again, the higher property values, and so hence the higher collection. Let me move on to the next line item, which is state, state, state revenue. State revenue, we're projecting to go up $240 per pupil. Again, I did hear today that it may be 230, so I may have to adjust this, you know, at midway through the year next year. As all of you could, are probably well aware, it's still up, obviously in terms of the budget. It's getting down to the wire. The governor still has to have the final approval, but it looks like it may be closer to the 230 rather than the 240, but I baked in 240 right there, so. I also wanted to mention that the reason why this is, it's not completely a large amount of money like you would expect, $240 per pupil times the amount of FTE that we have in terms of enrollment for students, gets us to a number that's much higher than what I'm showing here under local revenue, and I'll go back to that. The reason why, clearly, that I have to show less revenue than what you would normally think of is because that one-time payment that I explained to you in the last slide for the final amended budget, which was the unfunded liability that passed through, they're not going to continue that next year in the state. We do know that. And so that's going to be revenue that we're not going to show here next year, but it's also going to be an expense that we're not going to have that's going to flow right now. But I needed to show it, yes?
So what the state is doing is giving us 230, 240.
Per pupil.
Per pupil, and then they're offsetting it by not giving us the MIPsers.
No, actually, they're not offsetting it because again, that MIPsers is a pass-through. That's a good question, but keep in mind, that revenue was coming in the door from MIPsers for just the specific $650,000, but then it was, we were expensing it. So it wasn't like it was strictly just revenue.
So where is that money coming from now, since we're not going to be getting it from the state?
It's not going to be coming in at all, but we're also not going to have the expense.
All right.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Sam? Yes?
Your FTEs flat, keeping it the same as last year, is that because we're not anticipating OVA to grow?
We are unsure that we're going to get the growth from OVA because there's, there are several items that are still up in the air, frankly, with our shared time program as well, that we don't have final confirmation on. And so we're, as you know, shared time is part of virtual OVA. And so we, we're just, we're not there yet in terms of having the confidence to budget a higher FTE. Because quite frankly, the way that I am normally used to doing things, and I'm hoping you're appreciative of this, and I'm not looking for appreciation, but I don't want to be in cut mode left next year by assuming a much higher volume of students coming in the door than not coming to fruition. And then being in panic mode of having to slash programs and/or positions. And so that is one of the primary, if not the primary reason why I chose to budget flat.
Thank you. Yes?
So I don't know, I think it was just you and I that were here at that time, Tim, maybe Sam. Were we, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we approve raises based on enrollment being a certain number? And that's not what we're doing now, we're saying enrollment's going to be flat.
Yeah, so for, for three years that, that I've been in charge of the budget or the superintendent, every year we have budgeted zero growth, so that we know going into the year, I'll say it this way, worst-case scenario, we'll be able to finish the year of what we started. We, we don't want to anticipate a whole bunch of growth and a whole bunch of expense. And if that growth doesn't show up on our doorstep, you're turning around immediately and making calls.
Mr. Stupick?
Can't that, I mean, we could actually even, I mean, some school district would, where you project a decrease. I mean, so that would be even more conservative.
Correct, it would, it would.
But we're confident enough to know that we're going, we're going to at least go flat.
That's a trick question. I shouldn't say a trick question, that's a difficult question for me to answer because, again, it's unfortunate, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, but you know, we don't have a crystal ball. You know, we've been very successful, obviously, in the most past three or four years. And we're very thankful to all the hard work being done. I personally don't feel comfortable projecting, and I know Tim feels that way as well. You know, a guy can decrease as you're mentioning, potentially. I just wouldn't also want to be then construed as sandbagging, looking at our historical numbers. Someone may look at that and say, you're sandbagging. You've been growing and now you're, you're projecting a decrease.
I will say it's a much more comfortable position to be in, rather than putting it out there that we're going to grow and increases are based on that growth. From a board perspective, this is, this is a position that I would rather be in, rather than have to rely on enrollment. I think this is a much better way to structure it. Sorry for hijacking.
Hijacking, it's great to have questions, that's good. Should I, are we, okay. I really won't bore you here with the further explanation for revenue because quite frankly, it's all fairly low, but I'll just say that it's a small increase year-over-year is what I'm projecting for the original budget versus the final amended. Moving on to expenditures, what we're seeing here for basic programs, which is our largest category, so really what you see in basic programs are all of our teachers, or at least the vast majority of our teachers. Both general ed and a little bit of special ed as well, mostly general ed. And so as you know, as a school district, 80% of our general fund budget, at least 80%, is wages and benefits. So out of our 60 million, I'm projecting that 32 million and change will be allocated to the function of basic programs. And so the increase rate there, again, is 5.4%, a little over. And the reason why that is up 5.4% is again, as Tim just mentioned, this is now the second year of the contract for 18, 19. And we are also projecting increases across the board for our staff. And so that's baked in as well as new positions. So the new positions that we've, that we've either created or we are going to be adding in the next several months. And it needs, went up a small amount, 27%. Actually decreased slightly from where we were at. Very close, obviously, less than, less than 60%. Instructional staff, we are projecting to go up a little over 7%. Again, same kind of explanation. General administration, so general administration, almost 3%. Increased expenses across various accounts, nothing major from a dollar perspective, it was less than $15,000. School administration, as a reiteration, school administration is mostly the principals and assistant principal salaries and benefits. And, you know, that is up 3.29%. My business services department, I'm projecting $820,000, so a little less than 1% decrease. Operations and maintenance, looking at, Tony, put your earmuffs on, 5% decrease from year-over-year. And really, the, really the large reason, I won't even look at the screen, but the reason why there's going to be a 5% decrease in spending is the fact that we now have the bond and the sinking fund, and we're going to start receiving sinking fund dollars. But in addition to the bond and the sinking fund, which are only going to be spent on what we told the public, which are mostly building and transportation related, we also have the capital project fund, as a reminder. And I'll get to that in a minute. But keep in mind that we have the capital project fund that we funded last year from the general fund. We put $475,000 in there. And as you are well aware, we went to you with primarily large projects and then we've been using some of those funds as well for the safety updates, a portion of them. There's, in my estimation, at the end of this year, June 30th of 2018, there's still going to be about $115,000 in the capital project fund, okay? So we're going to be using that capital project fund upon, based upon board approval for further improvements to our buildings going forward, rather than using Tony's budget, hence the 5% decrease, okay?
I hope he keeps his ass.
Transportation, increase of 2.39%. One of the big drivers is capital purchases, and I'll get to that at the end of this budget presentation. But we're including the purchase of two buses within the general fund, within the transportation account line items. But there's also an increase that we estimate for our gas. As everyone's aware, gas has gone up a little bit. We're anticipating the gas prices to probably be at what they are, maybe increase a little bit, obviously year-over-year. So we have to compensate for that. Furthermore, we have Central as a function, Central's going up 1%, pretty small. Athletics only going up 1.66%. That 1.66% is really due to an additional athletic trainer contract that we have affiliations with. Adding another contract to that to increase the staff from one to two, but again, it's not a staff member, it's a contract, third party. And then the addition of an athletic event coordinator position, and then some small contractual wage increases that are baked in. But overall, it's only a $17,000 projected increase from budget. And then we have OIT below there, which is estimated to go down 20% in terms of the expenditures. Again, the, the reason for that is the overall estimation of numbers of students from the OIT program. So I just want to be clear as to why that's down as an estimate so much year-over-year. You know, we have, again, a $40,000, a little bit over, for community services. And again, just want to reiterate that in the numbers this year was the microphones, but there's custodial costs that really make up that, that amount of money, as an example. Let me get to the bottom line, because I think that's what everyone's interested in.
Could you, could you go to transfer for capital projects?
Sure, yeah, let me go.
In healthcare?
Sure, let me go move back up. So right here, the transfer, what I neglected to mention, which is very important in the last spreadsheet that I showed you for the final amended, which was a key component, was that we are looking to transfer this year, by June 30th, an additional $500,000 into the capital project fund, which is awesome. Again, we put in 475 last year, there's going to be 115 left in my estimation. So now there's going to be, in my opinion, over $600,000 in the capital project fund starting July 1st. That's, that's great, okay? In addition to that, we also have healthcare account that we had $600,000 funded from the general fund last year. Board allowed us to do that. We're looking to add another $500,000, so 1.1 million, okay? So that's, that's great. However, for the 18, 19 budget as it stands now, I'm not looking to put as much money, I had to balance the budget and still do all we had to do, or all we felt we had to do within the district from an expense standpoint, considering the revenue that we're estimating to get next year. So I'm only looking at about $100,000 for each of those. But I want to say, even $100,000 is phenomenal, to be putting some of your general fund money aside. A lot of districts can't do that in the state of Michigan, I'll tell you that right now. A lot of them are experiencing declining enrollment. So just wanted to let you know that we should feel, again, very proud that we're in a district that's growing. Want to go down a little bit and just kind of explain to you, again, a small decrease in the projected fund balance percentage. We're looking at the general fund to go from 9.289 million to 9,334,000, so an increase of $45,000. But because our expenses are going, expenses are going up year-over-year, the actual percentage is less than what it's going, what I'm projecting for the end of this year. So still very favorable to have a 15% fund balance percentage as a percentage of your expenses for general fund is right in line with what Michigan School of Business officials estimates most districts should have, between 10 and 20%. So we're sitting really nice from a financial perspective. Is there any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let this one down.
So you're not even done yet?
No, one more item actually, if I may. And that is what I mentioned earlier, and that's the, the purchase of two buses out of the general fund for next year. And these two buses are competitively bid from the state of Michigan bus purchasing program. There are two 65 passenger international buses going to be used for general education purposes. And these are going to be replacing two older buses that we have. More specifically, I believe Ann and her staff are looking to basically trade up, was it going to be 20 buses in total? Is that a correct statement, Ann, or no? In terms of all the buses that you're looking to, the old buses that you have, and auction off?
We're getting 12 new ones, plus this new one, and then the new many that we just had. So we're hoping to auction off, are we, maybe 15?
I'm sorry, I said 20, 15 buses.
15 buses, and using those proceeds to go back into the used buses. So we're hoping to, the auctions are going really good right now. They're going to get out, that's what we have, they're going to get, you know, 28,000 to 25,000 of the used buses that were, or the buses that we are selling are going to get rid of, yeah.
So just, just to reiterate as well though, that's something that you bring up tonight. As, as everyone's aware, we did purchase 12 buses from bond proceeds. as everyone's aware, we did purchase twelve buses from bond proceeds, we haven't received them yet, but that's the first, basically, the first expenditure from the bond proceeds is the buses. This is not bond funds for these two buses that we're talking about tonight, just to be very clear, this is general fund, and this is for next year, so, thank you. So, we'll be bringing that to the board at the next board meeting for approval. So, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Sam, which two, they're inside of our board?
Oh, actually, yes.
Capital, Stride, Holland.
I think it's Capital City buses.
Yes, they're the same buses that we purchased with bond. And those buses are scheduled to be built the end of this month, and hopefully, we will have them on our lot mid to late July.
Thank you.
Hopefully, mid-July. These buses wouldn't be, maybe ordered, and wouldn't actually, probably, we would not take delivery of these buses until, I'm guessing, October.
Any other questions?
Sam, you're done.
Thank you. The smelling salts are when you walk out the door.
When we get our new buses, can we have our board meeting at the bus garage, so we can see them and touch them and deal with them? It has been a long time, when's the last time we had, like, a bunch of buses?
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, that's a good year. Deja was in her fourth year of college.
I have, I have, in the last few years, we have had, there's one of our newer mini buses in the low range parade, and they have one of those brand new, full-size buses.
Great, good.
Thank you.
Maybe the board could write in it.
Mrs. Latauski?
Thank you. I wanted to thank the board for approving three recommendations for employment in the consent agenda. Sarah Jacob, who's going to be a Spanish teacher at D A. Glenda La Roza, La Fugue, science teacher at Doctor Baseball, and Stephanie O'Connell, a math teacher at Doctor High. I'm still practicing now. So, those were approved this evening, and we also have a number of interviews that we've been conducting in, in our department. Some of those positions that Sam was speaking of were social worker, and Danny Scully, also over the PAs we've been interviewing, have great candidates, so we're really excited and hope to complete that process very soon. I also wanted to let the board know that we had two late retirements. Lisa Dion is, is retired now, and she has been a social worker for us for a number of years, and Mary Prodeski, our teacher. So, last day's goal, retirement. And then, also, we did hire Jeff Ford, which I believe the board is aware of, for safety liaison, second one at the high school. So, we're very pleased to welcome Jeff as well. So, that's my good news. Obviously, I do have two staff reductions on the board agenda, and that is part of our world language change in program from Chinese to, to Spanish at the elementary level, so we have to lay off recommendations.
Someone like to make those motions? Dan?
Move to approve the layoff of Wen Keun Raymer, full-time foreign language teacher, effective June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, I don't like to do that. I guess I'll do it.
Well, you still have discussion, that doesn't mean you're going. We just can't put it on the table and discuss unless you, unless you don't want us to discuss it. No pressure.
I'll support it.
Okay, there is support, now discussion.
Well, I'll, as difficult as it is, our job is to make decisions that best affects students, and I don't, I don't like the fact that we're laying somebody off, but I understand there's been a change in our curriculum, we've made the decision to change that curriculum, and as wonderful as these people are, we have to make tough decisions. We've made the very difficult decision, one that was supported by previous board that I sat on, to shift from Chinese to Spanish, because that's what was best for, that's what we heard from our community and what our students were looking for, so, as difficult as it is, we have to make tough choices.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Dan, you want to read the second one?
Sure. Move to approve the layoff of Shi Shen, Shi Shen Wong, sorry, full-time foreign language teacher, effective June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen.
Heather? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did, I did meet with both of those individuals, and I know one, Sasha Wong, is, is really excited about going into a different avenue, business area that she's been wanting to pursue, so, and both of these individuals, we actually had to go through layup last year when we, you know, are making that shift, we, we got to recall them, so, that was, you know, that was a good thing, just because of, you know, different changes for other staff members, so, you know, if there is the opportunity, we'll certainly look at that as well.
All right, very good. Anything else in human resources?
Just trying to take care of everything before Dave comes aboard, I'll be getting retirements, and I'm doing the best I can.
As always, we appreciate it. Student services?
Nothing from student services.
All right, we have a number of policies.
I gave my time to Sam.
You gave your time to Sam. Caffeine tablets next time, you're right.
All right, we have a number of policy, plus we have one to discuss, so Heather, you want to?
Move to approve a second reading of policy numbers. One, four, two, one, criminal history, record check administration. Three, one, two, one, criminal history, record check professional staff. Four, one, two, one, criminal history, record check support staff. Four, one, six, two, controlled substance and alcohol policy for C M V drivers. Five, one, 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 eligibility of resident, non-resident students. Seven, five, four, zero, point, zero, two, web accessibility, content apps and services. Eight, three, two, one, criminal justice, information security. W D N, first reading I'm here to?
Pardon me?
I'm talking.
You've got two more on the next page?
Yeah, I know, I was talking to Pat.
Oh, sure.
Sorry. By literacy award and bylaw, one, four, three point one, public expression of board members.
Motion? Support.
Yeah, I just want to thank Pat for getting it straightened out, because the last time we read through these, they were all jumbled and everything, and they're all clear now, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The one that we moved to this point, zero, one, three, one, point, one.
So, we want to add that, we're going to do a first reading of that.
Yes, we want to do a first reading of that today. Do you have that in your hands, or do you need me to hand that to you?
I, I have the reading.
Okay, good.
You want the whole reading, or just the motion?
We just have the vote, we can just do the motion, we don't have to do the reading.
Right.
Okay. Move to approve a first reading of policy number zero, one, three, one, point, one. I'm sorry, bylaw, not policy, I apologize, let me restate, let me redo that. Move to approve a first reading of the bylaw, zero, one, three, one, point, one.
Support? Dan? Support. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unscheduled audience participation?
I'd like to just say one thing, Sam, I misunderstood your question a while ago, in that with the purchase of the fine buses, these buses, and the purchases we've made over the last couple of years with the minis, that our buses will be, will have about twenty, twenty-one newer buses within the last, you know, year to maybe four years old, and I think that maybe that's what you were getting at, and I didn't quite understand, so I apologize.
You actually didn't understand, because that's not what I meant.
The minis that we have acquired over the last couple of years, so.
I just unfortunately misunderstood what we originally spoke, and I thought that you were going to auction off twenty buses, so you're fine, it's my.
We'd like to auction off twenty.
Any other unscheduled participation? All right, you'll see that we'll pay attention to the dates for our upcoming year, for our board meetings, get those in your calendar. Any clarifications?
None.
None? Final board comments?
Oh, today was a good meeting, so I thought it was awesome that all the kids come, this is my favorite time of year when they all come. It was my son from D A, the reader, yeah, did not read going into second grade, I really have to hats off to the reading program that Ken put in at D A, though. He really, he went into second grade reading at a kindergarten level, and he is exiting just about caught up, and that is because Michelle Mumru, and it was a one-on-one every day, it was a very intense reading program, but, I mean, he really, talk about a light switch being turned on, so, that, I'm super obviously proud of him, and proud of our program, proud of all the kids, the athletics, all of it, all of it, all of it, the torque team, that was awesome, and those kids are so smart. I can barely get my toothbrush to get going, it's like, battery goes out, I just buy a new piece of stuff. The torque team's built in like elevator, I don't know what they're going to do. I love it, super smart. P E L A curriculum, the science curriculum, I love to hear about that, I love the safety update from Sam, even the financials. That's it, Tony.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
Well, I don't want Sam's head to get too big, but I appreciate the way that you amended the way that it was presented to not only us, but the way that it's going to be a document that if anybody wants to look at it, it's a little bit easier to kind of digest the numbers, so I appreciate that, and I really appreciate the fact that everybody that has a hand in, in the finances, and has a hand in making sure that we're looking out for our finances, that we're able to not only put money away to the capital fund and to do all those things, but we're, we're growing, and we're, we're being good stewards of the money that is given to us by the taxpayers and by the state, so I think that's outstanding as far as that goes. Ken, please let everybody know on curriculum that, you know, we just saw a bunch of students come through here, you know, and they're, whether they're getting an award for being in robotics, or they're at Lakeville, or they're at D A or Clear Lake, or any of the elementary schools, they're all coming in, and the great thing about what we do with curriculum and everything, is we give kids opportunities. And we gave a group of kids an opportunity, and they earned it, they went to Knoxville. And I can tell you, I'm being a little bit biased, University of Tennessee's a great university, and it's great to visit, and it's great to see, and I think that may be something that sparks something in somebody's mind, that says, I'd like to go to a school like this. And if we don't provide those things, they don't have those opportunities. And, you know, when you look at what's going on with the community involvement in Oxford, you know, Tom, you and your wife, you know, the, the reading program that you have out there, you don't find that in every community. Oxford has been great to us as a school district, and it's great that we're being able to give back in many different ways. So, I'm just extremely proud of everything that this board and our staff gives, so that we can touch so many different students, so, that, that's all I've got.
Mr. Steppik?
Thank you. Well, in the interest of brevity, I repeat what Heather and Dan said, it was a great night, it's my favorite time of year, too. That's it.
Proud is, is what you got to be feeling, I mean, I just wonder how many boards and districts in this state were able to watch what we've watched over the last several weeks in graduations, and recognitions, and record settings, and, and the things that are being accomplished, and, you know, it's incredible, it's incredible, and, yeah, the kids deserve those accolades, but I, you know, as I said earlier, the, the fact that the staff, the people who are given above and beyond are what make it possible, and that's what makes Oxford great, and so, it's a proud day, it's a proud day. Ken, collaborative approach to the curriculum choices and how that's done, I like that, I like that, so that's really cool. Yeah, thanks for the changes on the spreadsheet, Sam, I think it's going to be useful, I think it's going to be useful. So, I don't have any else, thank you.
Can I have one more?
Yes, please.
Sorry. Back to curriculum, Ken, I think it's really important that people understand the amount of time and energy and effort. Now, they come up here and they make a presentation for three, four, five minutes, and that's just the tip there, it's for what they do, and just kudos to the board for letting them have that creativity to dive deep into their profession and bring the best that we can bring to our students, so, that doesn't always happen, so, we all should be commended as well.
Thank you. Superintendent Throbb?
So, just a couple of, couple of quick things. With your budget, all of your employees that are in contracts, or in unions, those already negotiated step increases or salary increases are a part of that. With your anticipated approval of our budget for next year, that will also increase at-will employees' salaries by three percent, et cetera. What I'm giving you is the remaining contracts for positions, central office, that have individual contracts, and so, those are also reflected with three percent, but since they are in contracts, you need to approve those, and so, I'll have a recommendation for you going into next week, but I wanted to get those to you tonight.
Light reading?
Nice. Same thing as, same thing as last year, just an increase in salary. The, the change in one contract is that in Mr. Weaver's contract, his title will be Deputy Superintendent, instead of Assistant Superintendent. And just general comments, thank you. And just general comments, thank you administrators for bringing forward your students, I appreciate that. Congratulations to all our students and their parents and their accomplishments. Yeah, this is, this is what we do this for. I wanted to let our public know that our district did receive our school code for our Lighthouse Charter Academy, and so this was the final piece of information we were waiting on, and they are marketing Lighthouse Charter Academy. So I just, I wanted to let everybody know that. If you haven't been by the bus garage, go by the bus garage and see if anything jumps out, actually.
Doesn't look like the bus garage anymore.
It doesn't. It's looking good. It's got, well, yeah, you'll just feel see it. It's cleaned up, it's tidy, fresh coat of paint, it's looking good. Looking good over there, yes. And the last just thing, I just want to inform the board, is I'll be taking a few vacation days the rest of this week, so, just let me know.
Good. Anything another? It's great to be a wildcat, meeting adjourned.